Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Abington Planning Board. Let's just go over the, on a whole, after reorganization till we get settled. So, let's start with doing the minutes of the April 5th, 2020 meeting. Has everyone had a chance to read them?
Yes.
Are there any alterations, questions?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Second motion approved and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
You abstained.
An abstain, okay. Oh, one thing I should do.
You weren't.
One thing I should do publicly before we really get started is introduce our new member, Rick Shepherd. And Rick, I'll let Rick speak for himself, but he's no stranger to the planning board. He's served on the planning board before. And just want to welcome, on behalf of the board, I'd just like to welcome you. And congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. Look forward to working with all of you.
Do we have any formers tonight?
We do.
All right.
Seventy-five Dale Street. So I'm gonna have to pass the plans down, and while I'm doing that, if you want to take one and pass it down, or you and Bruce can share one. Just to let you know, Dave just looked at the Mylar, and all the language on the side is from a subdivision plan, so we can't actually sign the plan or the Mylars tonight because it requires a signature from the town clerk, which A and R forms don't get. So, Mr. Bakers, who's his consultant, Mr. Montgomery's consulting engineer, has asked that the board look at it and see if it's sufficient that they can get a version without the language on it back at the June meeting for you to sign. Is that down there?
So, is everyone here representing the?
Yeah, Mr. Bakers is here.
Mr. Bakers, would you please call?
And I just want to let the board know, I gave everybody copies of Attorney Questel's initial review of this back, what do you think, nine months ago, 10 months ago? And they've come up with two driveways. They've been to the Conservation Commission. And I also left you a copy of the zoning bylaw entrance and exit points, which need to be three feet from the lot line, which these driveways both are. So I just wanted to give the information I had.
Does anyone have any questions, comments on this at all?
So just to, do you want to do a quick clarification of what's changed since the last?
Sure. Since our last meeting, my name is Paul Bakers with Grady Consulting, represent the applicant Rick Montgomery of thirty-seven Orchard Lane in Abington. Since we last met, we, when we previously met, we were looking to use a single driveway to access both lots because of a wetland crossing and went through multiple steps. The final conclusion was, we were able to develop a new crossing and provide two separate driveways to each lot. Each lot has the required amount of frontage, each lot has the required amount of area. And as Liz has stated, we've been through Conservation, and they are preparing the water conditions.
And I just want to add Conservation did the stormwater management on this project because the planning board was only doing the A and R, and Conservation is allowed to do the stormwater management, and they were doing the deeper dive on the notice of intent. So they sort of ran those processes together, but they had two different people review what they did. So, they had two engineers look at the project.
Wow. So we can't sign the forms though, because they're not in the right place? Is that right?
Right, all that language on the side, below where your signatures are, belongs on a subdivision plan, not on an A and R form. So, but I think Mr. Bakers just wanted to make sure you guys were all set with everything.
Go with it, and we'll just submit a new Mylar for you to sign.
And then are you coming back for the rest? Is there anything else you have to come back to here for?
Not that I know of.
No, okay. One quick question, I guess maybe this is a little bit irrelevant then. The part of the driveway you're building along the paper road? Is that what I'm seeing here?
Uh, he's just making improvements to the paper road, yeah. I mean, he's providing, he's got two driveways. One's staying completely within the property to access the, to access the house. The other one is more of just secondary access. It's not his primary access.
Okay.
Are you improving the paper road, though?
It's being, yeah, he's making adjustments to it.
No, because that would require you to come back.
That was, that's under the definitive subdivision, though.
Yes.
And that's not, we're not, we're not improving it to, as a means of frontage.
Okay.
It's not, it's not, it's not to create frontage or to make this a buildable lot. He has, he has the access within Lot Two to the...
For the frontage?
He has the frontage out at Dale Street.
Okay.
And the access through the, through the other driveway that comes off the back to the primary dwelling.
Okay. How long is the driveway?
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Okay. Sorry.
Too long if your question is...
Right.
Do the residents who live adjacent to that right-of-way have users' rights to the driveway?
So my understanding is, they have, yeah, they have, the abutters have, because they have bought the paper road, they have access to the paper road. We're not constructing anything that makes, that prevents them from accessing the paper road.
But I mean, can they use that, your driveway?
They have, they have rights to it, just as the applicant does.
That's what I was wondering.
Yep.
Okay.
No, no personal property is being put on the paper street or anything like that. It's just, it's, it's really just a path out there now, and there's just minor modifications to the path itself.
Okay.
Can I ask you, what is the, I mean, this seemed like a whole different plan. I don't know what was planned for this big parcel of property, but what, is this, this is it, just for one house and this little lot?
It's, yeah, it's just for the existing dwelling, and then the proposed house as well. There is a, the applicant was proposing a tree farm that was discussed with Conservation as well, but other than that, no, that's it. It's just a single-family house.
Okay.
Any other board members' comments? David Johnson, do you have any comments on this?
No, my comment was transmitted to the board via signature blocks.
So can we approve this without the signature block?
I don't think, I think you can take a vote with a revised plan to come in June.
Okay. Well, would someone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Bruce, if you could just sign that form. That's, that doesn't need any adjustment to it. On the right-hand side, where it says received by the planning board, if you can just sign that. Thank you.
Take a look at the zoning board of appeals agenda. Does anybody have any comments on that? Does anything stand out on that, or anyone concerned?
Can we come back to that in one second?
Sure.
I just need to take another look at it, I apologize.
Yeah, they need a variance to build the common driveways. Wait. No, that's gotta be coming up. They're just putting two separate driv- Liz, do you know zoning board has seventy-five Dale Street on it?
He's gonna withdraw.
That's what I was wondering.
Yep.
Any other comments, notes on the zoning board of appeals agenda?
One second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Collins.
Which one is one-twenty-three Center Avenue?
I think that's Spencer's Pizza, I think.
Yeah, that sounds right.
There's a garage there, and Spencer's Pizza.
For the storage and preparation of ice cream.
Nothing bad about that at all.
Like that.
All right, screen.
Thank you. Also.
Bob, do you have any comments?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, good. Discussion action. Discussion on amendments to multifamily zoning district.
So just quickly, we did a presentation to the Board of Selectmen last Monday night. That was to allow the town to be compliant with that state draft guidelines. So as of today, you needed to file a report, give them a copy of the Board of Selectmen agenda, and make sure some GIS parcel information was up to date. We have done that, so we will remain compliant through the rest of this year. We expect final guidelines, they're saying midsummer. I think we all know how that works.
I'm driving that house.
Right. I think help, consulting help will be available after the draft guidelines come out. That's my impression from several people I've talked to, is that they're not really even getting into consultant help to help the towns and communities yet. Maybe some of them got some, but we haven't even looked at it, so.
Well, we have resources available to the town.
We do.
We'll call in.
We do. That's actually, that was one of the questions we had to answer, was where would you like to see the help from? And I said either OCPC or give us some money for a consultant. So I think that's it. I'm gonna just keep this as an agenda item because it's pretty important to the community, and it's definitely gonna have to be something the board addresses within the next year, so.
Any comments from any members of the board on this?
At our last meeting, I was charged with reaching out to Representative Sullivan just to voice our interest in language that basically holds communities like Abington harmless. Abington has been a little bit proactive compared to other communities in terms of allowing multifamily zoning around its train station. I was waiting for word for the budget to come out, and then amendments are being filed, and apparently I missed it. But, so we didn't get anything in the House budget, but Senator Keenan's office knows that it's coming. Senate is doing their budget in the next couple of weeks. They're getting the letter. Representative Sullivan knows that we're sending the letter to Senator Keenan, who is chairman of housing, by the way. His office has indicated that they are interested in this sort of note, so just an update on that end.
Thank you, Rick.
It makes sense we're not the old town like this.
We are not.
All right, it being six-oh-five, more or less. Amended site plan review, six-seventy-five Adam Street?
Six-seventy-eight.
Six-seventy-eight, excuse me, six-seventy-eight Adam Street. Would you state your name, please?
Yes. Thank you, members of the planning board. My name is Michael Nashawadi. I'm a owner, attorney, representative for Nashmac LLC, and it's plans to open a retail marijuana establishment called Cannabarn at six-seventy-eight Adam Street, hopefully in June. Ah, July, I apologize.
Thank you. So would you like to present?
Yes. So this is our fourth time in front of the planning board at this point, and each time we've made some revisions to the site plan presented. At first, the main subject of contention was whether we were gonna have to invest funds in the paving of the parking lot. And ultimately, after the last hearing in March, it was determined that that would be in the best interest of the town and the company. So the site plans presented, the amended site plan today, shows a paved lot with stormwater systems in place that our engineering department and my office believe are sufficient for site plan approval on this project. Ultimately, we received notice today that the, David Johnson from Norwood Engineering and my engineer spoke about the specifics of the stormwater basin, and there was a disagreement among them about whether it would handle runoff of a hundred-year storm without presenting any discharge at all to neighboring properties. Today, there is slight surcharge of stormwater during typical rainstorms because it's a gravel lot with no subsurface system in place. With the installation of the system we presented to you, during a one-hundred-year storm, which is eight-point-nine inches of rain, there may be a chance that the discharge or the surcharge of stormwater would be equal then or less to the typical stormwater you see runoff the property today during a normal rainstorm. So we believe that the, excuse me, we believe that the site plan is ready to be, ready to be voted on today because ultimately, we will be here next month whether we get voted in the affirmative today or not. It's our intention to be a good community member in Abington and a model business, and if it was recommended that we install a larger catch basin, that's what we will do. The question today is whether the work has to stop at the property until next month. We've been doing demolition and interior work on the project for the past three months. There's significant construction going on. However, we are not allowed to begin any exterior demolition or construction until we get site plan approval. It's very unfortunate that we found out today that the plans presented potentially would lead to some members not voting in the affirmative, so it's, we're here requesting in the alternative of continuance until next month because we can get the new plans submitted by next, by the thirteenth, which is the filing deadline for next month's hearing. We can't, our engineer has indicated that he could get them done by next Monday. However, in the case that we don't get an affirmative vote on the site plan presented with no conditions, the work has to stop, more or less, on the property. We've invested significant funds into the installation of a state-of-the-art security system. Because that security system deals with the exterior and the interior, they can't begin, they can't begin their project. The interior work, the interior work is ultimately close to being done, like what we can do as far as, you know, framing and things along those lines without some type of site plan approval in place. I feel as though if this board has an indication to vote in the affirmative with the understanding that we have agreed to do the paving as requested, and we will agree to the recommendation of David Johnson of Norwood Engineering to have zero surcharge during a one-hundred-year storm, as opposed to the same amount of surcharge seen during a typical storm today. That's my understanding based on conversations with my engineer. So, we believe that we've complied with the stormwater requirements with this paved lot, and we believe that per section fifteen of the stormwater regulations, you know, even if we were requesting a full waiver, it can be granted by this board. We're not requesting a waiver of the stormwater requirements. We're just saying that the stormwater requirements submitted today, in our opinion, are sufficient for purposes of granting site plan approval without negatively impacting the community in the event we move forward with it. But between you and I, we will be here next month with a modified plan, and we just want the work to be able to continue, which requires site plan approval. I've been to the building department many times on this, asking if there's any way around getting an exterior building permit, because the parking lot and the stormwater have nothing to do with our buildout. It has nothing to do with the buildout of the exterior of the property. It's pretty much two separate components to the project. And we don't plan on starting any pavement work or site plan work until at least June twentieth. It's gonna be the last phase of our buildout. By that point, next, next month's hearing will have taken place. We'll have an opportunity to present a modified plan. But it's our hope to open in July of this year. We've contracted with certain charities and communities in the Abington community to make donations on a quarterly basis. The town stands to collect a three percent local tax on all of our sales. I believe it's in the town's interest to get this project opened as soon as possible. And the final consideration is that we are, excuse me, an economic empowerment, social equity company. That's been certified by the state's Cannabis Control Commission. The purpose of that program is to allow members of communities such as Abington and Braintree, which were categorized as one of the twenty-six in the state that were disproportionately affected by the war on drugs, to get a head start in the industry. And ultimately, they grant us expedited review on our licensing reviews, fee waivers, access to certain license types exclusively, like delivery. And, you know, because the delays in site plan approval to this point, it's sort of cutting into that, the spirit of our, the spirit of our, you know, our equity status. So we strongly urge the board to consider voting to approve the plan as-is. And also, we're asking for a waiver of the charity bond amount from twenty-five thousand to five thousand, considering these plans call for a paved lot. And the biggest concern last meeting was, you know, the bond needing to be put in place in case the lot needed to be paved, if I remember correctly, I could be wrong. And if there are consequences for a negative vote, meaning that we wouldn't be able to bring the project next month or something along those lines, I'm not sure if that's in place, I'd ask the board to just try to give some sort of indication on their vote before the vote was actually taken, if possible, to prevent any sort of unintended consequences to the opening of our business.
All right, thank you. More comments?
I wouldn't mind hearing from David just about the characterizations, if that was, if that's what the issue is, is the hundred-year runoff.
Sure. There are several comments here that either carried over from the last review or new, and I did speak with the design engineer today, and substantially, all of those deal with revising the drawings. They're not significant in nature. There are notes, corrections of calculations on parking and so forth. The most significant issue here is what resulted from the paving of the lot. They have provided a stormwater management plan, which consists of catch basins and subsurface infiltration. They've provided Downstreet Defenders, which is a proprietary type of system that provides additional polishing of stormwater. All that said, the largest or the biggest concern we have is that these catch basins surcharge in the twenty-five and one-hundred-year storm events. That's significant because the surcharge coming out of the basins either are discharged onto the abutting property to the south, or they're discharged into the public way. And in the past, site plans that have come before the board have, have provided for the mitigation of the, up to the hundred-year storm event, particularly if there's discharge into a public way. And that was our biggest concern with the stormwater, was the surcharging of the catch basins. We've made some suggestions. One was to provide an additional leaching area between the structure and the abutting property to handle the overflow rather than discharge onto the abutment. And we also suggested that the applicant look at increasing the size of the subsurface leaching to accommodate the additional volume of water. Since the last meeting, they have done subsurface soil testing, and according to the design engineer's soil logs, it's suitable material for additional infiltration. So my discussion with the design engineer is that they look at providing mitigation for that additional storm event, so it's consistent with what we've looked at in the past, and primarily to keep stormwater discharge off of Adam Street and off the abutting property. All the other comments that we have in, were addressed verbally in our discussions. That is the most significant item that needs to be resolved. And so if you'd like to ask that question of either the applicant or the engineer whether or not they're gonna pursue that, I think that would, that would wrap things up in terms of the stormwater design.
So currently, if there is a hundred-year storm, the water would wash into the storm, into the neighboring property and?
Yeah, it would come up out of the catch basin.
Yeah. So there is a catch basin there now?
No, they're proposing.
No, I'm saying right now, currently, all of that would run to the neighboring property or into the street?
Currently being proposed.
No, no, no. As is.
There's no catch basins.
Right. So if there was, it was during eight inches tonight, all the water would go on to either the fifty-eight or the neighboring property?
The amount of water during the twenty-five and one-hundred-year storm.
Yeah.
Below that, it's handled with the subsurface infiltration.
Okay. Do any of the properties around it also run down onto this property?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Because this whole area really is just unpaved, processed gravel, dirt, so I just want to make sure we're not asking them to shovel against the tide, basically. That, sure, this little property might be, you know, have the hundred-year storm retention basin, but everything else around it doesn't, so it doesn't really matter. I guess that's what I'm trying to find out. Or am I just not looking at it right?
Well, I think you have to look at it kind of an incremental approach.
Okay.
Is that as projects come in, the abutting properties will have to submit a site plan and stormwater design similar to this, and those, the runoff conditions on those properties have to be addressed on-site. This takes care of the runoff that's generated by the parking on-site and the existing impervious areas, parking, roof, and so forth.
Okay.
They're not being asked to address stormwater coming from any other properties. I don't know if the engineer wants to confirm that in his design.
Yeah, again, Austin Chardy, McKenzie Engineering Group. So this design, yeah, it takes, it does not, it does account for water that would come from offsite, but as you were alluding to, it doesn't come on-site. It's kind of almost a little high point here, so water funnels up this way towards this route. One of the main things, there's not a drainage system within the road here, so we can't overflow to that. We would've done that if we could've, so this was kind of the next best option. And I just want to point out that this is a major improvement, what we've proposed here. You know, maybe once every twenty-five years, you might have water coming out of these catch basins, and I don't think it will based on the material I saw out there. But this is a major improvement. We plan to address the comments, but at this point, I think the applicant is just really hoping to move forward, and I've already been basically directed to address these comments, so that will be coming early, end of this week, early next week.
So basically, the drainage situation is solvable as long as they're willing to do it, but it sounds like they're willing to do it.
Yeah, with additional...
So...
I mean, in reality, is this gonna happen on a daily or weekly or yearly basis? Probably not, but we're given a set of calculations which says it will, so that's what we, what we review. And given what's happening with increased rainfall, global warming, and all of that, there is the potential for it to happen more frequently. And the biggest concern, as I said, is discharge into the town's system, and I'm not sure where that goes, but in terms of final discharge, but, you know, the town is supposed to be looking at all of their drainage systems and outfalls and bringing them up to standard as part of EPA's program, excuse me, program. So whatever can be kept out of the town's drainage system is going to improve the drainage systems that the town has or will be putting in.
All right, okay. Good, so I get it. Go ahead.
Right, and the soils indicate that it could be done by just... Right, and the soils indicate that it could be done by just increasing the number of chambers, which are not all that expensive to purchase.
Well, there are other aspects to this project. So, if it's, because I know when I look at things for space, and there's just no space, there's no way in the world they're going to come back with more room for cars when there's, there's no more space to put them on. Water's a different, different issue. My, my question comes back to that parking, which kind of has to do with that. You don't think, you don't think they have enough parking? How does that change from, is that a carry-on from the first review or the second? You mentioned that the applicant, that's not the one. The proposed number of employees should be noted, the six spaces may not be adequate to use with the other paved spaces.
Yeah, it was simply that they've only showed six parking spaces reserved for employees. My understanding is that they're anticipating up to, what, 12, 14 employees?
Um, six, six employees, sounds about right. Who knows if there's, if there's a need for more cashiers, there will be, but ultimately...
So, all we're looking for is designated parking for employees. There's adequate parking, obviously, on site, given whatever it is now they have.
Spill.
Right. Because I know, like, the billing inspector often looks at the parking calculations. I think one, one of the other issues was the other marijuana facility at, on Route 18, Bud. I thought there was a comment from one of the board members, maybe that there was something like 14 employees.
I, I mentioned that. They had told, that's what they had told me there.
Yeah, so...
You don't see them, I've gone in there to take a look at the place. Just, just, I didn't breathe that.
So, I mean, that's, it's simply a matter of, as I told the design engineer, picking some spaces and employee parking if required. It's as simple as...
Just to show that it's, like, the snow removal area.
Yeah, show additional six spaces and just help them as employee parking if required.
We did, we did try to address that by oral comment at a, at an informal meeting, that we could do some overflow parking on the gravel lot behind the warehouse, and it triggered a series of events that led to us potentially looking at having to pave the entire back lot as well for opening. So, we conceded parking spaces behind the lot at the time. I'm not sure if the board has the authority to, to allow that, if it deems it necessary, but ultimately, you know, there's, if there's a potential for us to have 14 employees working, there's still going to be significant parking spots available for customers that I think is more than sufficient for any sort of peak hours or anything along those lines.
I think if, if you find, you probably get a letter, that people would be complaining about the parking, people backing out into the street and stuff like that, that would be a question to come from the board.
We could come before the board at a later time, that was an issue, and propose some sort of solution to the...
Just so you know.
It's, it's not a, it's not a concern that there isn't enough parking. I believe that there's more than enough adequate parking on the site. The comments simply request that they designate where their employees are going to park. I understand.
Yes.
As simple as that.
Actually, I, you know, I, I agree with all the comments he's got in here that have to be addressed. Uh, my feeling is, I want to see this project go forward. I'm looking for a way that we're not stupid, I, I could say yes, and not stupidly leave something out here. I don't get a sensation, a sense that you guys are, you know, dog and pony show. I get a sense that you guys are serious about this thing, you put money into it and you're showing that you're, you're making changes. So, I just want to make sure we address all those pieces, that they're done as some kind of approval, I always want to get there.
Yeah.
Dave flagged something to me that kind of concerns me, is, well, not very much concerns me, is this require a special permit for marijuana?
Yes. It's been granted.
They got that.
We did?
Yeah.
Oh, we did?
Yep. That's for the use.
But the site, it was a site plan that was conditioned.
Okay.
Actually, a special permit was conditioned.
Okay, I'm sorry.
With all the things that are in our bylaw.
That was my question, I had to, let's make sure we didn't do spot zoning. Okay, then I just, I have another question.
Bob, did you have any comments?
So, I guess the bottom line is, it's everything, these comments could be addressed without too much trouble.
In fact, we addressed them verbally.
Yeah, okay.
This morning.
And you're confident the drainage?
Well, I think that's, that's the big issue.
Yeah, but confident based on?
If they commit to revising the stormwater design to handle the surcharge of the 25 and 100-year storm by adding additional leaching, my comments are fully addressed.
My only concern would be that if it's a condition of site plan approval that we do that, we will not be able to get the building permit. So, I'm asking for a clear site plan approval on the plan as presented in front of you with a commitment and assurance that we will be here next month.
Just, just a note, guys, if you guys approve that, then they can build it.
I'm not willing to do that.
If you approve the plan, they can build it.
Haven't we done this in the past, unconditional?
Not, not on drainage like that, though. Well, no, I mean, their, their initial site plan had, what, three or four pages, two pages of conditions?
No, I, I...
I am, I am about, I mean, we could condition it that they have to, to build the drainage. They're not going to get a building permit until they can prove that it's, it's done and reviewed by an award, award engineer, which is, which is basically Dave's recommendation.
But we, I thought we've done multiple projects where we've said, as long as, you know, Dave's conditions are addressed, here's your permit, and off you go.
They already got a site plan letter, and they're addressing the first condition of it, which was to resolve the parking, so now they're going to pave. The problem is the drainage. Their engineer and David have a difference of opinion on the drainage.
Right, but...
So, he's asking you not to condition this amended site plan with the drainage condition...
Only because the building permit won't...
They want you to approve it as it's presented, which is with the drainage that exists, that his engineer has drawn.
That's not going to happen.
Why can't they issue a building permit?
Because I can't get a building permit application signed until all the conditions of a site plan are addressed. That's the, consistent with everybody, that's what we do.
Which we have, we have conditioned it.
And they've met the conditions, and I can call Bob and have him come up and sign the building permit, and I take a copy of the building permit application and put it in the file.
And that process can't happen in the next two weeks?
It could, I would assume.
But you, but see, you'd be conditioning tonight that he fixes the drainage, and he doesn't want you to do that.
I have no faith that we will get a building permit issued with a, with a condition.
I'm not willing to vogue for it if the drainage doesn't, doesn't get fixed.
I think at the 2000...
The only other thing I needed to ask you, I'm sorry, is, um, did you get approval from the chief on the security plan? Because I still need a note for my file on that, that's on your special permit.
Yeah, the security plan was submitted to the chief from our security department. I haven't received any comment back at this point in time.
Okay, that's part of your special permit conditions?
Yeah, I think my hands are mostly tied on that.
Okay.
But the issue is that in 2018, when the town took a vote to increase the retail cap, they put some faith in me as an individual to follow through on my, my promises that I made at that meeting, at that annual town meeting, and to be a man of my word. And this isn't an increasing cost at all. It's not an increasing cost. The costs for these systems are digging and paving. The, the bigger basin, it's not an increase, it's a nominal increasing cost, it's not going to affect our bottom line. We don't plan on starting the paving until June 20th anyways, which, you know, is well after next month's meeting.
Which we're kind of up against. We don't want to set any kind of precedent like that. I don't, I disagree, I, I don't, I agree that we can't say yes without conditions, it would be crazy, and we'd also need something in writing from you that you're going to, what you're going to do. My concern is, well, actually, not concerned, what I'm weighing against, you're, you guys are who you are, you're honest, but we've had little old ladies standing there swearing to their gods or whatever like that and just lie to us.
Understood.
And so, the words don't mean anything. It's nice, we kind of, but we kind of judge, but when it comes down to signing something...
I'm going to be in front of the planning board three or four more times to finish this project. I'm not going to sour the relationship over, over something that won't increase the price of our project.
Would your project be harmed if we approved it as a condition?
Yes.
Okay.
Our July opening date would not be met. Our economic empowerment priority status would be discounted by a further month. For the past three months, I've been trying to find ways to get a building permit based on the condition approval that I got two months ago. And I've exhausted all avenues to the point where, you know, I, I don't even feel comfortable going up and asking anymore for any other ways to get a building permit.
So, if we did this with a condition, there's no chance you would get these issues resolved? You would meet the conditions within the next three and a half weeks?
I can't say. I believe that the, the town's procedure is to only allow conditions to be formally approved at, at the next planning board hearing.
No.
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 So, what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is, like, if we did it with a condition, could you hypothetically get a revised plan to Dave, you know, by Thursday, Friday, next Monday, next Tuesday?
We submitted the...
That's the guy that does it.
We, we could, um, yeah, we could.
And then, I guess, Dave, it's up to you to say, yes, this is what I was looking for, and then conditions met and building permit is applied for. Is, or am I missing something, I guess?
I, I believe I sent you an email on how the process works, that you get a site plan approval. If the site plan has conditions, I get a plan back with all those conditions resolved on the plan, in the notes, however that gets resolved, and then I send it back to David. He sends me a letter saying you're all good, or you didn't do 1, 2, 3, 4, throw those on a plan and get it back to me. That's how that works. You're back here to amend your site plan because you needed to add parking and drainage, and that's a significant amendment.
Yes, absolutely, I agree.
Right? So, that's why you're back here amending the site plan, because that was your first condition.
Right, yes.
Other people don't get, they either have the payment in existence and they're just going to stripe it their way, or they do some other drainage work with their site plan.
I understand the concern.
I guess, we said...
And we'll be here, but next month, if it's a vote in the negative, we'll, we'll be here next month, or, you know, if it's in the board's interest to continue, we'll be here next month, but the project's going to stop for like...
I mean, hypothetically, if they were to get your revised plan in a week, is it going to take you a week to review it and...
If, if they submit the revised, essentially, the revised plans, which are not, as I said, significant, if they submit the revised drainage calculations to me, I can review it in a matter of a day and notify Liz if it's acceptable. And so, I, as Liz said, that's the way we've done it in the past. Revised plans, unless there's a significant outstanding issue, the board has approved, subject to conditions. And sometimes plans don't come back for three or four months.
Yeah.
But as soon as the plans are submitted, I review them.
So, I, I think there's a path forward here that shaves a couple of weeks off the schedule, if that works.
That works for me. I'm, my biggest concern was having to wait another month without, you know...
No, I think, Dave, if we can have your word that, when this comes in, you can take a look at it.
Liz and I work great together, we're getting these things done at a time.
I, I just want to remind you that all your conditions in your site plan letter and in your special permit letter need to be met, all of them. I can't ask a board member to come in and sign something that has not met all the conditions of their approval.
Understood, we'll, we'll be very thorough.
So, I just, I want, because that was, that was something that didn't happen when you dropped off these initially, which is fine, I just want you to go back through everything and make sure everything is in there.
I understand.
You, you guys have fun with that, I just want you to understand about the over, looking for that water. Every single plan that's come across this for the last 15 years, I guess, is all of it's all water, or people complaining about the water that's now in my yard because someone else did it. So, Dave's doing exactly what we've asked him to do, is to be really tight on the, on the water research this week. We don't, the neighbors have no one to turn to once it's done.
We will be doing it whether the vote approves it in the affirmative or not tonight. It's happening next month. If, there's a few week delay, that's required to not prevent any sort of, you know, precedent. I, I respect and understand that, and would ask you to consider, you know, approving it as it's a substantially compliant system in place now, with the understanding that, you know, we will voluntarily do it next month because we want to put, put the best project forward. You know, even a couple of week delay, it's, it doesn't seem like it's much, but we have substantial construction going on right now, and we've already had to do another dilution fundraising event because of this, so I own less of the company than I did because of this original delay. And, you know, any more delays, it's, it's, it's not, I appreciate the workaround that's being made right now, I didn't know it was an option. So, if that's an option, that's great, it's better news than I had this morning. But I'm still going to ask that if the majority of the board feels like the plan is substantially compliant, and the risks and the cost benefit analysis here, you know, the cost of approving the plan here is potentially, you know, I don't come back next month. The benefit is that the town gets a store open a month earlier where they collect a disproportionately large share of tax revenue from our store.
I, I think what the board seems to be leaning towards is, we'll approve it with the condition that you iron out the difference or get the updated plans to Dave, and then, really, that time frame, timeframe's up to you. So, if you want to get it to them, you know, tomorrow morning hypothetically, you could.
Yep, understood. It's going to take us about a week to get the plan together.
That's fine, but I mean, I think we're trying to shave two to three weeks off this timeline.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate everything you've been backing us up to.
Absolutely, I understand.
I just want to give our new member, Rick Shepherd, do you have any comments on this all right?
Uh, no, no, I don't.
So, I was just holding off on my comments to the end. So, it seems like we've forged a path forward. I'm concerned that the project doesn't meet the 100-year storm, you know, management thing that, you know, Dave mentions in his letter. But if revised plans could be made within a reasonable timeframe and reviewed and stuff like that, conceivably, we could, you know, vote to approve this tonight. The other thing I wanted to talk about, you mentioned, was the, you're asking for a waiver on the bond, you want to talk about that, please?
Yeah, so, there's a requirement that we put $25,000 in bonds to the, to the town in the event that certain conditions of the planning board are not met. I, I can't exactly, I don't think I'm in a position to fully define the reasoning behind the bond, but the town does require a bond of $25,000 to cover any, anything that they feel they have to pay because, you know, the business, I guess, reneged on one of their commitments, along those lines. So, there was a substantial paving project that was being left off, and we understood the need for the town to hold that bond. But now that the paving's being done and the stormwater's being put in, $25,000 bond, it seems disproportionately large, especially because it's going to cut into the, the amount of inventory we can put on our shelves for opening day. You know, we want to put the best product forward, and it's, it's a good amount of money that's, in our opinion, just going to make it so we don't have as, as much product, product on the shelves opening day.
So, you're asking for two things, basically, the waiver on the stormwater...
Not a waiver.
Excuse me, well, approval.
Approval of the submitted.
Approval submitted, we worked out with David, and I consults to, you know, get this approval, and the waiver on the bond. Anybody on the board have any comments on the waiver on the bond?
I, I think the 5,000's probably adequate, considering he's probably not getting his occupancy until the site plan is complete.
So, you'd go along with a $5,000...
Well, yeah, I mean, if he doesn't complete everything that's, that's submitted, he's not going to get his occupancy permit.
I, I agree, I think you should have some sort of bond. I could go along with 5K on this instead of 25.
My first thought had come to 15, but there's a reason behind this, is that it stings. If you don't do what you, a lot, there's people that walk away from 5K.
I will say that the other shop that was licensed was granted the same way.
Green Harbor or...
I'm not sure which one.
Bud's.
Bud's. Yeah, so, it was, it was done in the past, that's pretty much why I asked for it.
I think that's because Steve Goslin asked for it, and we've done it for him in the past, because he has a track record.
There was a lot less, a lot less going on with that site.
How long has the bond held?
Till the project's complete.
Till completion.
So, I guess what, the only real work that we would have to take over in this situation is probably the island near the main entrance. Everything else is a vast improvement from, there's, there's nothing there now. I mean, it's not like, you know, they're going to be tearing things down and leaving a hole.
Well, part of that is, it goes back to an example project where the, they didn't do what were they told they were going to do landscaping-wise, and the building inspector had no choice but to give them a building permit, it was, and it just went away. So, from that point on, you know, we just realized that you, it's got to sting, there's no way, otherwise, they just, everybody just says that, and they walk away, and you'll see, every project you see where the tree is big on it, they didn't get, didn't get rules.
It's, it's cheaper to what, to lose a 5,000 than to spend 8,000 on the final landscaping and curving and...
Yep. This, this project doesn't work if we don't follow up with the next steps of the projects, which is going to require your, you know, town approval, the board's approval, so...
I'm good with 10.
We have, we have pretty vested interests.
Tim?
We can, how about this, we're going to lower it to 10, and then if you can prove there's less than 10,000 worth of work, we can lower it further. there's less than ten thousand worth of work, we can lower it further.
If there's any.
So that you take care of everything.
Yeah.
And they say, look, there's only three thousand worth left on our checklist, we can lower it.
Yeah, and it gets returned on project completion, is that what it is? Yeah, that's fine.
That and any interest of mine.
Yep.
All right, any other comments on this? Okay, other comment? Anybody out here want one? Is there any public comment? All right.
Do you need to make a motion?
So, ready to make a motion, would someone like to make a motion on this?
So, there's two requests, will we make them as separate motions or co-mingle them?
Well, I would do two.
Yeah.
One for the bond and one for the approval.
Well, I'll make the motion to reduce the bond to ten thousand and then approve the site plan with the conditions of, of changing the drainage to Norwood Engineering satisfaction.
Do you want to just do a contingent upon the letter from April twenty eighth?
Yes, yep.
And someone would like to second this?
Second.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
See, Green Harbor finally started. Four down their side of the building and.
Yes, obviously decided to do this.
It's like the building themselves, almost, it's like they're building themselves almost. It's a small.
David, let's do lunch.
I think there's some issues.
Okay, we're not here to sit, we don't have to go there, we can go anywhere.
Not a good thing.
All right, final item on the agenda tonight is board reorganization. We have a new member on the board, our former chair has retired after many, many years of honorable service.
But he's here.
But he's here and he didn't want this, but I want to recognize the former chair and thank him for his many years of service to the town of Abington. Many of us were at the Best of Abington event and I can't say, I, I was teasing him, I said, it's like going to your own wake when you're alive, all these people saying wonderful things about you.
Well, that's a really good way to go, isn't it?
All right. Does someone want to make a motion to nominate someone to be chair? I'll nominate Bruce. Would someone like to second that?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous, thank you. We also need to vote to elect a vice chair. Would someone like to put that, make a motion to that?
I'll nominate Jeff Rangel.
Second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, now we need a clerk, because Jeff used to be our clerk. I know, I, I hope you can keep that up.
I think the new guy needs to be clerk.
Yeah.
What exactly is this job description?
He gets paid lots of money.
I have no idea.
You get paid.
That sounds like a good job description.
You get paid the same amount of money that I get paid as chair.
Yeah.
Which is zero.
Okay, that was by Bob, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Gee, thanks.
I just want to thank the board members, you know, I've been on this board a long time and.
How many years?
Twenty-four years. And I just want to thank you for your confidence and, and I've got great big shoes to fill from Wayne over the years, but I learned a lot from him and I can still learn. But this is a collaborative effort and we all listen to each other and we all work together and that's, that's the thing I love about being on this board all these years is that we don't always agree, but we do listen to each other. So, thank you. Do we have any other business?
Just quick, before you motion to adjourn, and then I'll let Rick have his fun, they, if you guys could start thinking about what potential zoning changes you'd like to make. I would like, if, I, I will start putting that on the agenda, maybe in October. I had a conversation with Mr. Fiore today, who offered, he actually has a lease signed for energy storage, for battery storage, which of course, the board pulled before town meeting. So, he has offered to try to get somebody out here to talk about that with us.
Oh, that's good.
With you. And the same thing for marijuana cultivation and production. The person who was interested in locating there, he's not sure if they're still interested or not, but I did ask him if they could come out and maybe have a conversation with the board about what that would entail and invite the public.
Maybe some people would come and listen?
Maybe.
I, I would, I would like to, I would like that, I'd like to see the, with that, if we're going to do that, to have a little closer communication with the zoning board. I, I have no idea, like, all alone and then making up their own stories and saying bad.
So, I, I can tell you, everything that you guys got, they got. I emailed everything to, so they had all of these proposed changes multiple times or at least twice.
No, I think they should, I don't know, they should have put it on, maybe they shouldn't. How they do them, because, because I know if we get stuff sent, you know, we're not working all this, all the time and, you know, probably Wayne spent the most time doing everything about keeping them, you know, what do you, what do you, they must see stuff, they constantly are saying yes, yes, yes to that, you know, we have to maybe address this. I, I don't know, because that seems to be the only issue. We don't want any more authority than they got.
No, no, and, and the proposed changes, I did send them to them and they didn't ask a question, they didn't come to the hearing, I, I heard nothing back. I mean, I would have been happy to pass any of their concerns along to the board members if I had received them, but I didn't receive anything, so.
At least I thought because of the Indy there that they'd be talking.
Seemed to be an awful lot of questions on town meeting floor where we had. We had plenty of meetings and discussions.
Yeah.
Well, that's, maybe we can get the process started a little, I mean, and, and part of things was that we moved town meeting up to, to the real date in April. So, that shortened everybody's timeline for everything, so what my hope was that if you guys thinking about what you're looking to do for change, like the mixed use on Route eighteen, that was suggested, that kind of stuff, that maybe by October, November, we can start having real conversations, or you guys can have real conversations about it and then by December, January, we have somewhat of a bylaw in place and can have conversations at meetings for anybody who wants to come in.
I think the town manager at one point had mentioned maybe a fall special, have you heard anything if that's going to?
I think that's off the table.
Okay, all right. That, I mean, that was going to be my suggestion is that between now and then to make this a permanent agenda item and just ten minutes during each meeting, just workshop a little bit. We have the tree one that I'd still like to follow up with as well and that requires a little bit of just spitballing and creativity, I think.
Yeah, so if, I mean, any of that stuff, if any of you guys think of that stuff, if the chairman likes, we can add it to the agenda and have a conversation about it at a meeting. I mean, October, November for me was just a good starting point, but if you guys want to work on it over the next couple of months, that's, as long as Bruce is happy with that, then we can do that.
I'd be as happy as early as, you know, September meeting, start just putting it on there permanently. That way, you know, we can say, look, we had eight meetings where you could have discussed or asked questions and nobody did, so.
Right. Or, I mean, and maybe you guys can help with an outreach of what do people want, right? The mixed use on eighteen, on Route eighteen, I thought was a great idea, but what other things, like to the zoning board or conservation or whoever, right? Regular citizens, if they have stuff that is concerning to them, that maybe they could come in and you guys could try to address that through zoning change.
So, Liz, going back to something you had said earlier about getting somebody in to speak to cultivation?
Mm-hmm.
And invite the public?
Mm-hmm.
Would that take the form of a public hearing, a formal public hearing or?
No, I think that would be, well, you guys would sort of be running it, but I don't think it would be formal so much as maybe informal, educational, more of a workshop type thing, people could ask questions, they could do a presentation and.
Okay, and would that, okay.
You guys have to have a formal hearing over the proposed zoning changes?
Yeah.
In like February, March.
I think one of the most weird things, twice, they came before us to put stuff up on the big tower, a big tower behind the auto body shop on Route eighteen. And I, I don't know anything and they're all saying it's all within government regulations, thinking, guarantee, none of you checked anything. So, one isn't too much. I thought, you know, if we ever had anything to somehow get an expert to explain to us what's going on, you know, so we're not ignoring these things, just blasting out waves.
The, the government actually changed those, because you guys used to hold site